Okay, so it's after seven, we have a forum. And so I'm gonna call our October first meeting of the Concorde Planning Board to order. This meeting is being videotaped. You may also make your own recording, but if so, please let us know so that we can make arrangements and not be disrupted. So, we have a fairly light agenda tonight. I think the really the only formal piece of business is approval not required plan for some parcels on Mustafield Road. And I wonder if Marcia you could take us through that one. It's a little more complex than our usual A and R.
Some of them, yes.
Involving a hammerhead lot.
This is a hammerhead lot that was approved by the board of the zoning board of appeals and it is subject to a special permit.
And it's the last one they'll ever approve.
If that passed.
Well, okay.
I don't know.
No, maybe they'll get another one before town meeting, but.
Well.
We're gonna take over approving these in the future. We think.
The special permit process, you think you're taking that?
We're we're putting in a bylog in the.
Okay.
Our power grab.
So Larry Beals is here on behalf of the owner, I believe.
Yes.
Okay. So if I say miss speak or say something that is not true, would you please jump in?
I'm not.
This plan was previously reviewed as had a potential for subdivision. And the owner was encouraged to look at alternatives and came in with the idea of creating a hammerhead lot. However, they found that there was it didn't meet the fifty foot requirement of the hammerhead, it has to have a certain width. So through and they didn't wanna and this a butter didn't want to have the driveway coming through his what he viewed as his backyard. So they negotiated with the this owner, negotiated with this property owner. So there is an exchange of land here where this parcel C is to be added to lot eight A, the budding property. And parcel eight B will be combined with the this lot that's being created, the hammerhead lot. So that they will have the clear fifty foot dimension that they need for the hammerhead lot. This plan is subject to a special permit issued by the board of appeals. And the note that is required, lot A is subject to a special permit and shall not be further subdivided or the lot dimensions altered in any manner without an amendment to the special permit.
Wow, okay.
So they can't come back and reconfigure things through an A and A and R process.
Just do an A and R.
They will have to go back and amend their special permit. But you as the planning board is are authorized to sign this as an A and R at this point in time.
Yeah, now this this lot originally went all the way around this other property, just with a very skinny. It it already did have this little section down here.
This this is already existed was part of this this whole.
Yeah. Yeah, it just surrounded that other house.
Correct.
Yeah.
It it simply surrounded this lot that's sort of on the corner.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. Okay.
So I think in your agenda memo, there is a highlighted section that outlines what.
I'm curious why the three hundred foot circles.
That is a requirement of the hammerhead lot, that you have a clear area with that dimension.
Ah. I see. Got it. And in and is that specific to the zone like residents A has created or B?
With within. It's it's within, no, it 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 has to do with the the hammerhead requirement.
Oh, for any any district. So you won't get many in residents A then, or S C, excuse me.
Correct. C, it's correct.
Or even B.
There were when this zoning was created to allow hammerheads, there were maybe twenty to thirty parcels that would allow that. And it was an alternative, if you have a fifty foot right of right of way into a property, you could conceivably have the potential to create a subdivision road. So it offers property owners an alternative form of development when you have a hammerhead.
Yeah, yeah.
And you don't create a new road necessarily, you're just having a driveway, you don't have that expense to the town and so forth.
A driveway, yeah. And the whole big process.
And that's and that circle is supposed to be buildable or it could be wetlands or anything.
It can be wetlands, it just had to have that large dimension.
That's the intention.
Yeah, okay. If I see Nathan has his agenda memo out.
I haven't.
And so I would entertain a motion.
I move the planning board to endorse the plan for Arment and Ingrid Nicolai and Michael and Sarah Solomon at two oh nine and two forty five Mustafield Road dated October first twenty nineteen. Or what's the date on the?
November thirtieth, or September thirtieth.
September thirtieth, twenty nineteen.
September thirtieth.
By precision land survey as approval not acquired because the position of the tract of land shown on the plan is not a subdivision because every lot shown on the plan has the required area in frontage as required by the Concord Zone bylaw and the zoning board of appeals special permit decision recorded with the South Middlesex South Registry of Deeds and authorize the chair clerk or Department of Land Management director to endorse the plan.
Hey, do I have a second?
Seconds.
Okay, discussion, any discussion? All right, all in favor? Okay.
Thank you.
I'm assigned as tomorrow.
Thanks.
All right. Okay, so now, actually, I think I'll take this opportunity to introduce a candidate for the planning board. Haley, could you could you introduce yourself and and just describe your interest in the board and?
Sure, yeah, so.
Where who, yeah, your name, where you live and all that.
Yeah, we're on seventy six Upland, so we're at Upland and Pine in West Concord. New to the area, coming up from Washington DC. But my husband and I had been got Davis Square, Keegan Hill in our younger days. And now we have two kids and a dog, so enjoying the Concord suburb life so far. And I work in renewable energy. I've been in consulting and worked for developers for over ten years now. So kind of the and aside from renewable energy, worked a bit in the field of energy efficiency standards and smart growth. So it's always been just sort of a general interest of mine. You know, this is the first kind of real opportunity where we feel like we're settling in a place where we're ready to have a long term vested interest in the community. And you know, my background is is business, I went to get my MBA and have undergrad in business as well. But in another life, I would have been an urban planner. So it's kind of where I spend my free time is reading about urban planning topics. So I heard that there was an open seat, so.
So I have had a conversation with Haley. I don't know if anybody else wants to avail themselves, but you know, our next step would be to recommend to the select board that they make the appointment.
Should the green card and everything is already.
Oh, that that part, yeah, that's how we got a hold of this this application. There are two members of the select board right here. So I didn't know if there's any any other questions or discussion. We do now have, it it looked like we would have two solar professionals on the board, which is kind of interesting.
Could I just ask Haley, what's your last name?
Orvedal, O R V E D A L.
I don't have questions necessarily for Haley, I think I think that's great and certainly welcome more gender diversity. But what's the select board schedule?
I'll ask them to put it on the agenda for Monday, what's today, Tuesday, yeah.
Right, but then it has to go through two of their meetings.
Two, right, so.
Yeah, it's the first meeting, you'll be nominated and then two weeks later, you're appointed.
Okay.
So basically November.
And then once appointed, you'll receive a letter and then get sworn in by the town clerk and then you'll be eligible to participate.
Yeah, and so in our next meeting is before that, I think.
Yeah, it's before the end of November.
Yeah, I don't think she would be able to sit until like first week.
Well, no, I think she might, because ours is on a Tuesday, their meetings are on Monday.
I could.
She still has to go to town.
Yeah, but anyway, you'll you'll be notified.
Oh, yeah, that that's right, right, they have to get, you have to get sworn in.
Yeah. I'm just trying to figure out a way to get you on here.
Yeah, one on the seventh and then yeah, the next one is on the twenty first and then our next one is on the twenty second.
Five years.
So if you went down on the the twenty second during the day, got sworn in, you could come sit with us.
We'll know how.
How dedicated we would be.
How excited you are.
That assumes that your controversial nomination is not opposed.
Thank you Haley, thanks for having us.
Yeah, yeah, thanks for stepping up because we've been short for a little while and.
I have another question.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Is that also?
Is there, is this a is it a full member or is there some designation?
We're we're all full members, yeah, yeah.
All full members, okay.
Does that also balance us out in like Concord, West Concord?
We, I think for the first time I've ever heard of, have a majority West Concord board, I think. At least defined in a in in a.
That's exciting.
Hey, I think, oh, it's payback for, you know.
That's very.
Hundreds of hundreds of years. Anyway, and then also, I think from a gender diversity position, I think we're probably in a better balance than we've been.
And what's your blood type Haley? What's your sign? What sign we're. I'm sure we're just all diversity.
Oh, yeah, this is how we're getting it to.
This is how fun we are.
True diversity.
We're like this all the time.
All right.
Very good, we're excited, it's great.
So now, let's look at our major initiatives for the twenty twenty town meeting. So where we're at is we have draft by law language for the accessory dwellings and the two families. And they seem to be standing up pretty well to scrutiny, a few little tweaks to the accessory dwelling, but so far so good, I think. The other thing is we got, we've had questions from the public about kind of what would be the effect of the bylaw in terms of number of units created and fiscal impacts. We are in the process of getting answers to those questions. The first piece of data I think we got was last week when Liz Russ came and gave us a presentation, kind of let us know where, you know, where we stand in terms of the number of of units that have been created under special permit and all that stuff. So now, we need to reach out to other committees and boards. And I know that Elizabeth has been trying to get a kind of miracle to happen, which would be a joint meeting with the assessors, the school committee, I forget who else. Finance committee, I believe, which would be like a cast of thousands. I I don't know how where that sits. But we do need to somehow get more formality around, you know, answers to those kind of questions. And the the other, I think, piece to that is to get more input from neighboring towns such as Acton that have recently passed similar bylaws and to see how things are going with that. Another thing that we want to do is to have a public forum. And I would like to target November, if possible, you know, early to mid November. And we just need to come up with a date for that fits with the town calendar. And Mike Lawson has suggested this would be a joint public forum with the select board on this topic. And so to run that meeting, I think we have a presentation that we could give. And the the nice thing is that I gave a presentation last Thursday to the League Women Voters where they had a whole pile of questions for us and they actually were great in structuring a presentation. So we've uploaded that presentation to the to our planning board website, so it's available for review. And I, thanks to the feedback from the League Women Voters Town Government Committee, Elizabeth and I discussed a few updates. And so I've already created a new draft that kind of gets some of those new pieces of info in. And we'll continue to tune that until November. So that's where we're at right now, but I'd like to ask our select board folks that are in the audience if we could somehow try to track down a date for a forum and and a locale where we could hold it.
I do know at the most recent finance committee meeting, when the idea of a joint forum was put before them, there were some people asking why, why do we need to be involved in this discussion? So I think they're hoping that a forum will be set and then as many of them that can come will come.
Okay, and I think that that seems practical when you consider all the different parties that are involved. It's just gonna be really hard to arrange a formal joint meeting. And I think we just really need the expertise of certain people.
What their conversation, I happened to notice that what their conversation was lacking was any reference to the spirit of the long range plan that wanted to that thought it was important to reach out to other committees for impact and discussion before it went to town meeting.
I see.
So I think that's helpful to provide that context for people.
Well, I'd be helpful, I hope, you know, happy to actually go to one of the finance committee meetings and just talk on this topic to kind of, first of all, get them aware of why it is that we're reaching out and then, you know, and secondly, what we're looking for to get back from them.
So Dean, I'm sure Vanfield.
Okay, so I should reach out to Dean Vanfield, yeah. Okay. And then on the school committee, I don't know if there's some key player there that, you know, the main thing is basically based upon the kinds of units and the our expectation of number of units, what would be the school impacts, that's clearly a discussion.
Well, are are they in a position to to have that information? I thought that was more coming from Liz Russ group.
They develop models.
This who, the school committee or?
The school committee develops models of the school population based upon, you know, their understanding of housing production. And so if we're gonna tweak that, then, you know, their model's gonna be affected. And and I'm sure they they've got a whole methodology for that, so, yeah.
Well, on top of that, Elizabeth Hughes reached out to the town clerk, Kari Tari, who to ask
Yeah.
for information about school age children in different types of developments. And so we've we've documented the rental housing and our affordable housing projects in terms of rental children or the number of children.
Yeah.
Housed in the rental projects, but we haven't done that yet. And we're in the process of doing that for the planned residential developments.
Okay.
That emphasis.
And so once we've got all that data, we'll get to look at it and hopefully then that could be input to, yeah, this process, so. So that's the kind of data that we need to get, luckily, we have six months to get it all together. But that said, time goes by, you know, it's sooner is better. So there are those two pieces. They'll, the next one is our sort of business for tonight, which is moving on to changes to the planned residential development by law. And so I think what we've discussed in broad terms is trying to improve the open space provisions and tightening up the Upland provision so that, you know, we get fewer marginal types of sites or uses of space. And so Elizabeth has put together some options here about the things that we could look at, and I don't think they're all mutually exclusive. And so I just wondered if we could just get a discussion of, you know, how we might want to adjust the language. And, you know, one of the things we have to always keep in mind with this is planned residential developments are discretionary. We want to encourage this pattern of development typically because it's typically more in line with our town's goals as defined through a comprehensive long range plan relative to other kinds of formats that are available, like subdivisions. And so we need to, maybe while we tighten things, we also need to keep in mind not to tighten things so much that no one wants to do a PRD anymore, because they could always develop something else. And we had that situation once before with adding the affordable housing requirements and making them so tight that there was only one PRD done in like ten years. So.
And and then after that, did that relax?
Yes, so they were relaxed by town meeting, you know, and now we've gotten, you know, typically, we we still get a few subdivision plans, but we get, I'd say, on balance, more PRDs than subdivisions.
Okay, so I it just for clarification, so in the apps, like during that period of time when there were kind of more more criteria for the PRDs, you had more subdivisions?
Well, that's actually one piece of data I don't have, maybe Marcia knows because she's been here through that time.
I would.
Is, you know, when they when they tightened up that, did people switch over and do subdivisions in that time?
We had different types of development, we, there was the residential cluster development.
Uh huh.
There were a few more, I think some subdivisions. There were improvements to old subdivisions that allowed for further lots to be created. And it was, it was a very tight.
What years were?
Yes, what?
What years are we talking?
Yeah, we have a memo that outlines all this history that you wrote.
I think it's something like nineteen ninety to two thousand, early two thousand.
Yeah, so it's like the nineties. So, and I think though, there was only one that was done, which was the with the something Meadow, the one down by the across from Damon Mill.
Yeah.
Right.
That's the only one that got built, I think, in the nineties.
Right, right. And they provided for affordable housing in that development, so. But what had happened is in the late eighties, nineteen eighty seven, nineteen eighty eight, the town adopted a zoning bylaw amendment to the PRD that required inclusion of affordable housing.
Yeah.
And only one developer decided to go with that, actually two went with that. The first was more successful than the second, I think. But it was a real deterrent for other others to be looking at. They they just didn't want to use that that vehicle. And so the planning board made it an option in the early two thousands.
Right.
And I I guess I, I mean, and I guess I'd want to hear kind of more about that, I mean, if affordable housing is very important to us, then maybe, you know, more important than the housing density or something like that of non affordable housing. I I think that that is a an example of what could happen if we included it again, I don't know.
Well, but we do already have this provision that you with affordable housing, you get bonus density.
Right, for for increased density, right.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying, I think that's a good thing to say, like if we tighten them up, what potential consequences might be? And the potential consequences might not be bad, they might be more in line with where we're trying to go. I'm not saying that particular one, but.
I I think it's really important to take a step back and and look at the purpose of these different types of development.
Yeah.
When the planned residential development was first envisioned, it was in response to a moratorium on apartments in the town. And on the floor of town meeting, there was a motion made that no more than four units per building be included. So it sort of create is it took away the the apartment bylaw that we had had. And we adopted the, then they adopted the PRD with the goal of preserving open space. So then it was, then affordable housing became more important or as important as open space. And that was a provision that was required in the PRD. Developers didn't like the way it all fit together, so they stopped using it for a period of time. So so looking at how things get developed, and it might be important to talk to some developers about if we were to focus on affordable housing, what would that look like versus if we're looking at open space? If we're looking at clustering units and what does that look like? It's just a a different approach.
Yeah, and so I actually think there is this benefit potentially of increasing the open space requirement because it might drive more dense building structures, like Alan was showing us. He, you know, we got this presentation that showed, I think, more compact dense housing. I think you can have up to eight units now, right, in a in a building?
Right, yes, yes.
And so, you know, with that, you could, you know, with the increased open space requirements and the and also dimensionality of those open space opportunities we've got, it would sort of force then a development pattern that would be this tighter, you know, with a nice open tract. It just would be different from the typical Concord, you know, go down the street and they're single family or two families masquerading as single family homes, you know, along a street. And I think that we're kind of saying, look, for PRDs, you want to have maybe a different pattern than that, ideally. So, yeah, and here's what we say today, you know, and even with what we say today, you'd think that sort of conceptually, that looks good. It'll have a shape, dimension, character, and location suitable to assure its use for a park, recreation, conservation, or agricultural purposes by at least all the residents of the planned residential development. But if you look at recent PRDs, I would say you could kind of marginally say that's true in some cases, but.
Can you stop there for a second?
Yeah.
Do you do you mean this marginally untrue? Wait, what?
Yes, I mean, it's either marginally true or untrue, depending upon what you want at your perspective, glass half full or empty.
And so. So why were they approved? And what was the way of, is it, if we think that we see a standard here described, why do we have trouble holding the developers to the standard? It's just not, it wasn't much of a standard as as it needs to be, or?
Well, this can be interpreted the way, in many ways, I think, this is very loose.
This.
But are we the interpreting body?
We are the interpreting body and it is very sort of open ended. And so it's up to the kind of sense of the board. And by the way, we're not the only board. Then it goes to the ZBA and they decide, right? They can go against our recommendation and have in the past an occasion.
It could be more quantified this thing. For example, the hammerhead lot has a circle of channel.
Yeah, yeah.
So we we can put something like that, where a certain percentage of the site has to be contained and not.
I see, I think that something more, you know, specific would be helpful.
Yeah. Yeah.
Even though, yes, you're right, we have, this gives us the latitude to say, nope, it's not, you know?
Yeah, no, I, it would be great to get something more specific. And e- even like raise the bar a little bit with, in terms of maybe how much of the undevelopable wetlands they can count as open space.
Yeah, and then you see down here the the list of A, B, C, whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, and again, these are, these are great criteria. We very rarely have.
Um, well, um, what's the development that, uh?
So we just approved the four thirty Old Bedford Road, so that would have some for B, right?
What's the one in West Concord, um?
Fourteen forty Main.
Main is fifteen.
No, 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 the one that's a couple of years old, like. Oh, the one that is in now? Yes, that's on the Concord River, I mean, that was a good example of land that I bought to the Concord and ask for separate river.
Riverwalk.
Thank you, Riverwalk.
Yes, yes.
So that that clearly fits into A.
That's right.
Um.
And so, you know, trail networks, scenic views, so.
And so you're, we're, what we're talking about tonight is, you know, how we might want to amend this section in particular
Yes.
among among some others, kind of to to make it better.
So. One one comment I would have is that, you know, thinking back to when there was a affordable housing aspect to the PRD that basically pushed developers not to even use it. I I would be mindful that we not create such strict specifications that it then sort of causes that same scenario where developers are like, ah, it's easier for me to just do a subdivision or do something else. Easier to get through, higher chance to make more money on the on the builds. One thing that that somewhat vague language allows us as a body is that we can kind of push as much as we can, you know, for what we think works for that particular lot and can kind of read where things are going. Whereas if it's all outlined, then we're constrained as much as the developers, so.
Um, how about, uh, so one of the problems seems to be like these kind of marginal, like land counting towards the
Yeah.
the total amount.
Yeah.
So one thing we could do is say that, like when you're calculating your open space, it should be contiguous to the area of which you think qualifies under this rubric. So that it's not like I've got this tiny piece that's, you know, a raccoon lives in, so it's wildlife habitat. But then I'm gonna also dump it in the calculation, all these other areas, so that would be one thing?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so it's all, it's continuous, but.
Yeah. It's contagious.
Continous, somehow continuous.
Not not to call out any particular development, yes, where the where the perimeter is being counted in.
I don't know if we can like, how do we do that?
Yeah, well, so and then um there is also this A, you know, to exclude wetlands and isolated wetlands
Ah, sorry.
uh as defined as a uh
Yeah, I would say.
Yeah.
Okay, I think that one seems pretty straightforward.
The the wetlands. Mm.
Um so that'll already, I think, tighten up.
Yes, yeah, that would make a big difference.
Right.
It will.
Um.
So that's that's actually really big.
I think it's potentially quite big when you consider the number of sites we have that have wetlands.
Ah, okay.
Um. So um the other is, I don't know, you know, contiguous, well contiguous could be contiguous, uh you know, we have to figure out how to.
Mm-hmm, right, 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 right. Well, that's what the suggestion, you know, in here is, do we wanna specify a minimum width or length?
Mm-hmm.
or area or radius around something, um.
Mm.
Mm, well, the minimum size of a lot that you can put a PRD on is one acre. So you can imagine.
It has to be a percentage.
Yeah, you could do a percentage of.
Yeah.
And and then if you had to do a percentage of one acre.
Well, common's open space already is a percentage. Um the bylaw, it's specified, it has to be, was it twenty five percent?
Okay.
But it does, it
Oh, of open space.
of open space, but that's not stating.
Yeah, common open space has to be twenty five percent.
Sort of.
And then at least fifty percent of that needs to be upland. Okay, and so now if we just increase the percentage of that, that has to be upland.
But that doesn't address the issue of just having.
The shape.
Yeah, so if you're looking to to say you need twenty five percent to be a block of some of some s- not a blob, but a block of some sort, uh
A block.
Ah.
Yeah.
Some way to approach that, so that you don't end up just having something using.
Yeah. Mm, a a sum.
Yeah.
And and this this also does say it's not set aside as yards, so then it's like, how do we interpret that?
Yeah.
Because some of it seems like it should be somebody's yard if it's just like really feels like somebody's yard versus part of the open space. You would count that way?
Well, ran into that again with
Public open space.
to 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 leave it unnamed, where there was a public space that was basically backyards.
Right, but exactly. But that so but but what if if we're saying it's basically backyards, okay, well that says it's not set aside as yards and it should be interpreted as
Yeah.
Right.
it seems like somebody's backyard, so a person walking in there who doesn't live there but wants to take, you know, use the open space doesn't feel like they're walking through someone's backyard. And is 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 like not like, oh, uh is this, you know, it's got everyone's like long like bachi ball on it or whatever, so I don't know.
Right.
I just think there's a lot we can do with that, which is a common sense approach to what seems like someone's yard or not.
Yeah, um now, one of the things that we started out with before we began this year's work was that when we looked at the PRDs, we were gonna look at that natural resource protection zoning concept. And what they do there is before there's a design submitted, there's an inventory done of the natural resources of the site and then the selection of the open space based upon that. And then the developments built around that.
Let's do that. And you say that's done in another town or?
Yes, well, there's a there's a model by law and then there's uh I guess some towns out in Western Mass, now typically these are rural areas.
Yeah.
Uh you know, where they're talking hundreds of acres and they, yeah, but the concept is a great concept because I mean you can imagine some of the sites we've looked at
Yeah.
there are areas that clearly because either the you know the mature stained trees they've got or the to- topology or something, they would be preferred, now they might also be preferred by a developer to construct. But when we look at, hey, but what do we wanna keep? It it turns the discretion back over to to us as opposed to to them. Now, again, that makes it very tough for them to decide, well, is this a developable parcel for me?
Yeah, yeah.
Because I don't know what these guys are gonna say, you know, they're gonna they're gonna carve out this thing and make it impossible to build, so
Yeah.
it's gotta be a negoti- it's gotta be a
Yeah.
a two, you know, collaborative effort and it's hard to, you know, hard to achieve that, you know?
Yeah, but but when you when we when we say, so and we were just talking about this kind of with Marcia, which is like, okay, when they got too tight
Mm.
and clearly there was a feeling that it was too restrictive in a bad way, which is why they relaxed it.
Yeah.
But like when we we asked specifically, well, was there subdivisions, well, what were the projects that were created? I actually don't hear that we know that, I mean, this is kind of what Kristen was saying.
But there was a bad thing.
That necessarily that restriction was a bad thing because we we aren't here to facilitate, you know, make the life of developers easy, right?
Right. We'd have to go look back and we should look back.
But there, in in one of the prior housing charts, um I recall going through and identifying the majority of the PRDs at that point in time, it it might be ten years old and so we'd have to update it, but
Yeah.
it has how many units, how much open space, um and so forth, so I provide that information to you if if that is useful.
Yes. I've got a copy of that.
Okay.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have an updated version of that, there have been a couple since then, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Um but another idea, I'm sorry, I'm just like throwing ideas out there, but
Sure.
um you just made me think of it when you're talking about like a habitat inventory, uh natural resource inventory is um this uh item, where is it? It's C, it says land which provides a significant wildlife habitat or which is a unique natural area.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, people see that significant wildlife habitat, a lot of times they think about rarest, like listed rare species habitat.
Yeah.
Versus like in the long range plan and I hear like um elsewhere that people really value wildlife habitat. That's not just rare species habitat.
Right.
That provides valuable habitat to our creatures that are not yet listed, um and I could list them, but that's not necessarily what it's squirrels and, um so maybe we could um kind of emphasize that. And so if someone was doing an assessment at the beginning, um of like where the good wildlife habitat is on the property, it's not, it's actually relatively easy to assess that, that would not be like a, you know, having to get like a expensive consultant on board and like produce a big report.
No, but I think we actually do have get determinations, is it from the Natural Resources Commission, they 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 can assess that. Um.
I I think this is what maybe you were talking about, the Model Open Space Design Natural Resource Protection Zoning.
There you go.
From the Smart Growth Smart Energy Toolkit by law.
That's it.
So we've got some good stuff to start with.
If if anything, we've got too much.
Yeah. Oh, this is twenty nine pages.
If you look at that by law, yeah, it's pretty.
Twenty nine pages.
How how many, we get seven minutes in a town meeting?
Yeah, yeah. Um I mean, there's a lot of explication there, right, you you can
Yeah, yeah, I would I would think it was.
take it down and the style of it is very different from our style of by law too. So it would take some work. Um but I just think maybe we don't have to adopt natural resource protection zoning. Which is again primarily focused on rural communities, but we can take some of the concepts and that's what I'm trying to think and how do we do it without just messing up everything, you know, so.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So that's that's the question, so. I think that, you know, in terms of tonight's discussion, what we need to do is first of all, it sounds like we've got consensus on the um the wetlands business and are we gonna say no wetlands? It says right now fifty percent can't be wetlands. We're probably not gonna have be able to say that none of the open space can be wetlands or an isolated wetlands, cause again, in some some sites.
Yeah.
Mean, what's your habitat is a a swamp.
Yeah, so.
Well, I and I think that 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 comes in discussion sometimes is that they they want to build on a swamp.
Yeah.
Well, but this is the common open thing.
We're talking more, I think we're talking about the common open space.
Right.
I mean, to to say, I I thought there was a differentiation here that you wouldn't count open space in the basic density. But that you this that I didn't hear any conversation about the percentage of open space wetland area changing, you know, there's there that's different concept.
Right, so two two things, like in our memo, A and B, I think, to kind of let's talk about this separately.
Okay, yeah. Right. Okay, so so.
Right, if you. Um your maximum permissible des- density here to us, uh.
Well, and that does the same thing though, doesn't it, because or is it just for density, it wouldn't be for the size of the?
Say you have a forty acre site and ten of those acres are in wetlands.
Yeah.
This allows you to count twenty five percent of that or two and a half acres of density, so if you're in a Nate uh residence A, that means you could have an additional two and a half units
Right.
as your basic number.
Right, and so we would cut that and that would
If you.
cut the number of units that could be constructed, make it a less attractive parcel for doing a PRD in the first place.
Right. Right.
Um and again, if they were gonna do a subdivision, they would have this similar kinds of wetlands where you can't build, you can't, you know. And and because the subdivision is more rigorous in terms of the lot layout, you would have non-buildable portions of the.
Right. Uh which when you when you talk about Concord River Walk, they use that to their advantage to get the density they needed
Yeah.
to put in the development that they got. As a result, we were we were able to get access then to the river and we have the potential of creating a walk along the river.
Right, so we have to be careful not to.
So that's exactly right.
Yeah. That's a great, that's a great.
Yeah. Um so but then what I was also thinking of, okay, what if your basic density is less, that's still not gonna affect though your common open space calculation.
Okay.
Right, and so.
Yeah.
So I think it would be really important to look at that updated chart of PRDs to see how much was open space, how much was wetland. We can go back and and create those those numbers so that you as you're looking at what do we tweak, what do we modify? Is it twenty five percent, is it thirty percent, is it ten percent?
Right.
And looking at those.
And I'm I'm looking at the twenty fifteen version of that chart, that was the last time it was updated, it looks like.
Pretty bad.
Mm. Okay.
And it's got twenty seven PRDs on it.
Mm-hmm.
Um which gives us a good foundation, I think, data.
Mm-hmm.
Um now, what it doesn't, it's not able to do is to talk about the configuration of that open space.
Yeah.
And so this is where I'm still a little stuck, how do we say, you know?
Well, I think that the way it's written already gives us la- I I think it gives us really good basis for making a determination. At just a common sense level, personally. I thi- I think that the wetlands is where if we're gonna try to do, I don't know, are we trying to do this incrementally? I think going for the wetlands, not vis a vis density, but just the calculation of open space would be a good one.
Also, um maybe there's a way to talk about the twenty five percent, we can say twenty five percent is uh uh maybe fifteen percent of which should be a circle or something like that, because tw- twenty five percent could be any shape or uh
Right.
So s- uh part of that, maybe it's a it's a circle, a circle is the most uh, but it's not a very big circle, I mean twenty five percent could be a very big circle, but uh a smaller percentage of that is a is circle should fit.
What's a circle though?
Hmm?
He's saying that, said like the.
The wetland is a circle? Or the open space?
Open space, basically, yeah.
That the configuration of the space, that some percentage of it would need to fit within a circular.
I see.
Yeah, yeah, so otherwise, otherwise this op- open space could be any, that twenty five percent can be anywhere, you know, it's
You know?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know if that's too restricted.
But you could end up with something that looks like an amoeba, but you know.
Yeah, at least.
Yeah.
But you know, it's still an amoeba instead of just a snake.
Yeah.
Snake, yeah.
Yeah.
Sure, but it's this already says it shall have a shape, dimension, dimension, character, location suitable to assure its use for, so I think this really, really gives a very for uh but
Yeah.
I think it's there, uh but.
Okay, well.
Um, yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah, at the end of the day, like we we should probably use this ten point, two point, nine point one more aggressively to just saying, no, that doesn't count.
Yeah.
Right.
Done.
And 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 like they should get like a, I'm not sure if I've seen some some uh projects exactly how they're, where the bits and pieces are are and how much space that is and how that kept gets into the total calculation, so I but um so for the wetlands, it'd be good to know, like generally there's a number which they're not gonna be able to develop anyways, and that's the number that I don't want to include to go towards their open space. But I'm not sure what that number is, I mean, and I know it's like you you don't, no one's gonna be able to say that without specific evidence.
But you know, some of the criteria would be things that are like wildlife habitat could be a wetland. Okay, or a unique natural area could be a wetland.
Mm, yeah, but if they if they can't develop it anyways, it's like I don't want them to be able to double count it.
Huh.
Do you know what I mean? But but that might be too restrictive, that's just my it's like why, or they can't develop it anyway, so why are we letting them count it towards the PRD open space?
Well, this is giving, this is giving us the room to determine whether, for example, the the wildlife habitat C is allowed as part of that twenty five percent. So again, we can say no, or if they're making a good argument, we can say, okay, that's reasonable in this situation.
Yeah.
And then the next one comes along and they try to make the same argument, but it's not, it gives us the leeway to to say yes or no on that.
Yeah.
I don't know, I'm getting, the more we're doing this, the more I'm almost like, I kinda I kinda like the leeway this gives us, we just need to be more aggressive about
We want the leeway. It's really, it, yeah.
using this to our advantage.
That's interesting, yeah. Well, and also thinking about how it can be better communicated um when they start the process. Um so that so that they don't get somewhere and then we send them back to the drawing board based on what they should have done.
Right.
Yeah. I totally agree and like what 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 it's kind of goes to back to what Matt was describing in that other regulation was like start with negotiating what's gonna work for uh your your open space and then figure out what you can develop and whether it works in the space you have left, rather than
Yeah.
Open.
Yeah. coming up with a a development proposal and then save what you have left for open space, like it's it should be the other way around, it's like
Right.
come in with your open space plan, maybe it's like a two-step process, come with your open space plan, have a sign off on it that leaves you with a development footprint and then decide what you're gonna do in that footprint, but like you were saying, how are they gonna know whether it's financially feasible, but it's it's it seems like the car's supposed to be the car.
That's an interesting approach, by the way, cause it might be a relatively informal process that first step.
Yes, I think so.
Right, it's just like one one meeting, you know, rough drawing. You just have your site, I you know. But I don't know if there's any precedent for doing that.
Yeah, I mean they would that could determine whether they purchase the land or not in the first place, I don't think they're gonna come to us per- prior to purchase the the determination.
Yeah, yeah.
But I I you know what, I think they have to at some point, because don't they have to somehow evaluate what they can do on the land before they?
You
Yeah, I think guaranteed that we're gonna get a spending on any project, right?
But I think they probably do that based on
Exactly. Right.
But they probably do that based on sort of the precedent that's been set, so they would, I mean, I'm not a developer, but if I'm going to develop, I would look at what
Based on, based on maybe the allowable.
has the planning board approved and what developments have been made in the past five years and say, okay, they've been able to do this with this size, this many units, et cetera, and and looking at what's allowed and then
Right, there's gotta be some.
try to maximize on that and come with an aggressive plan that gets knocked back some.
Yeah.
Sure. And I I have no doubt that that's what they might do, but I think in kind of our long range, you know, goals and as we're moving more towards sustainability and we're kind of putting more teeth behind that, um I think that that's gotta get communicated to anybody who's gonna be working in the town, I hope.
Yeah.
Um but yeah, I mean, I agree, I I don't know how development works, but again, what we keep saying is we should talk to developers and things like that and I think we should because we want a well-rounded perspective, but we we are doing this for the preservation of, you know, the the land and the
Yeah.
character for the citizens and future citizens, um.
We're also, I think, gonna find that by and large, future PRDs are gonna be outside of the village center areas.
Right.
So they're gonna be on sites where there is kind of be more of a presumption of o- open space, they're gonna be in a double A or residence A. Um and so hopefully, you know, there will be more opportunity for them to create such spaces.
I st- yeah, I think there still could be something to organizing an application process that you come in first and don't even like show us what you think your footprint is, but we don't even want a development plan. Just sell us your open space plan, because that in in their like just sort of like in their minds or from a process perspective makes it clear that that's the horse is the open space plan. Your car is your design, you know, and even if, so just so they could think about it that way, so it's not like, don't come in here and tell us, well, we can't give you more open space
Yeah.
because I'm like can't fit all I wanna develop and it's like, well, you know, that's just putting the car before the horse. We would wanna do that with anything that has open space requirements though, right? Like the cluster and.
Yeah, well, I haven't seen a residential cluster in my whole time.
Right.
Is there, this is, this is.
And I'm not, I'm not sure why people choose to do one versus the other, I don't know enough about it.
Or compound, I haven't seen a residential compound either.
This is s- sort of a tangent, but I was thinking about the sustainable, sa- sustainability aspect of this and we've brought up uh uh you know, garages, solar and and things before. Is there, wh- what about working in uh an amendment that that says Is there, wh- what about working in uh an amendment that that says you can add an additional unit? If all the units in that development are not solar ready, solar in place
Well.
and single garage, no more.
Yeah, yeah, we should do that.
I mean, we're not gonna be able to have so have a requirement for PV for the solar electric for each unit, cause the the si- the site might not be suitable.
Why?
It could be a rural area.
Yeah.
It could be an annual certification, which is right. Because particularly if we're trying to preserve trees. You know, cause the shading might make that, and and the
Unleashed certified.
and the face might, the facing of the homes and things like that, but I do think even more than that would be kind of the efficiency of them and whether they're all electric or, you know, like, right.
That's where I'm looking at the the efficiency.
I mean, I I I think they should be solar ready.
And again, I don't know what the level of incentive is, but uh that's what I've been trying to suggest is can we build in incentive and unfortunately, I think the only kind of incentive
Right.
we can offer is a density incentive incentive um for a bonus for sustainable, you know, developments, right?
Right, and and I could live with if we had more units, but overall they took um less footprint and less electricity or less energy, I think that would be a win for everybody.
Right.
Yeah, right. Yeah.
And I don't know what that increase would be, but you know, again, just off the top of my head, one additional unit.
Well, this is where maybe some discussion with development uh folks would help us figure out what the
may not offset that cost, but.
We shouldn't lose our ass.
what the right ratio should be.
Yeah.
Um. Cause that is.
Yeah, Haley can help us, that's right.
You're talking Haley's point to me.
Uh she'll she'll get us to get the right answer on that one. Um but you know, especially since it, you know, the town's energy is moving to all green energy.
嗯哼。
I'm I'm less concerned about solar, uh you know, roof um because it's already gonna be green.
Right, we get it.
And it's gonna be large-scale, you know
Right.
sources, but the efficiency of the home still matters a lot and that that's some place where you can really.
Because then it takes less of the of town's green power.
Yeah, and that actually, so if we can kind of wrap this part of the discussion up, that brings me to the next discussion topic, which was so a document that we received this past week that was from Durham, New Hampshire.
Before we move on, can I say one thing?
Yeah, sure.
So what's um we're asking people to kind of change the way they're uh presenting their projects to us, Marcia. Is could that be a thing that's not regulatory, but could just be written into uh like a guidance document or something like that, that's not?
Well, a guidance document means they have the option, they don't have to come to you.
Okay, fair enough.
If it's in the regulations, they have to come to you, so that's a question to you is we we certainly would encourage them to do, to do it if you wanted it as part of a guidance document. Uh and you we could start there and if people don't use it, then we can make it part of the regulations, so I think baby steps.
嗯，fair, okay, thanks, take care. Thank you.
Yeah, so well again, let's make sure we've got this clear.
Do we ever.
Uh so first of all, on the list of things that Elizabeth asked us to look at, maybe we should just go down that list of A B C D
Okay.
and just see if if we have any. So uh basic density, do we wanna make basic density exclude wetlands and isolated wetlands? So we've had a little bit of debate on that, when you look at the Riverwalk, for example, they were able to get, you know, get more density and make the project work because they were able to create those cottage-like units, right, up on the upland portion of a lot that had a lot of wetlands.
And it it contributed to the basic density.
Right.
Even they they had a large amount of floodplain that would not have otherwise been counted in land area.
So they they were able to create a, you know, tightly clustered set of units at one end of the property and keep the rest open.
So.
Maybe I'm, am I reading this the wrong way? I- is it actually, it should be include the wetlands in the calculation for? Cause you want the total space to be counted, so you, but you're still limited to putting it on the buildable portion.
There's two different concepts. There's your basic density, so if you look at, I have ten acres, it's one acre zoning, I get ten units.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If I had half of that is wetland, I can only count twenty five percent of that five acres
Right.
as for my basic density, therefore I only can get one unit or one and a quarter units. So the total air, the total number of units in my basic density on that site that's half wetland is six and a quarter units.
Right.
That's how it stands today.
That's it. That's how it stands today.
I think that's a reasonable, I think it's pretty good as it stands today.
Yeah.
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 So no change?
I would, at least for me, I like the idea that, okay, we already are discounting wetlands to some degree, but we're not wiping it out completely. Um.
But.
Now, are isolated wetlands included or just wetlands?
Just the wet, just the wetlands that are part of the wetland conservancy district, so isolated wetlands are not included.
Yeah, so one other possibility is we could just include isolated wetlands, because that's where I think we've gotten a lot of debated.
Well, then it would increase.
It would, but it's also where we've gotten a lot of this sort of marginal
嗯哼。
kind of development where it's encroaching on what I think your layman would consider a wetland.
嗯哼。
Okay, and so uh that would be a tweak versus this where it says, no, you can't have any counting of wetlands.
So what, so for Riverwalk, they they in they included a portion of the wetlands
Of the floodplain, yeah.
of the floodplain, so they were able to increase the basic density.
嗯哼。
They were bo- able to build thirteen units on a relatively small site, so.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah, so it, but
Instead of, let's say, ten.
which is what we want, which is I think what we want to do, so we wouldn't need to amend it to allow for a greater base density.
So you want more density in it?
Well, I think it's, I think it's okay the way it is, but I don't think we wanna get, I don't think we wanna exclude anything, but I think what we wanna amend is ten ten to nine, sorry, ten to nine. Where it says common open space.
That's a, that's a separate one also, we're, oh, we're.
So I don't, so sorry, my
No, I just wondered.
I think we should leave a, I I do not make sure anyway.
Okay, so we're leaving A.
So it says, then it says um when you do the basic density calculation, it's the number of dwelling units obtained by dividing the sum of the area of the tract exclusive of land situated within the floodplain or wetlands conservancy district. And twenty five percent of the area of land situated within the floodplain and wetlands conservancy district by the minimum lot size permitted in the.
So you only get a twenty five percent credit as it stands.
So yeah, I just wanna make sure we're we're looking at as it stands now and saying either yes, we wanna keep it like this or we wanna change it a little bit.
Or. Or we tie this back to what we were just talking about a second ago, and if you meet X uh sustainability criteria, you can count.
Weird, but that's pretty weird, that's that's tying two totally disparate things to each other.
Yeah, I don't know, how do we do that? That don't might, that must have to be some separate thing for density.
I would just say bonus density should be on its own for sustainability. And then what we decide about wetlands is a separate thing, I'd say.
This is basic. So basic density is kind of like the um the, yeah, this is where you start with, and so we wanna make sure that calculation is where we want it to start.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's right, even that's the second one, yes.
So the.
And then give bonus on top of that for whatever we want.
It's defined by unit of uh area or square footage.
That's where it wants, yeah, exactly.
Um, I think it's be- defined by units, right?
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Within the zoning district, didn't say.
Okay, right, based on that, based on the minimum lot size.
Just the number. So so you might wanna add a a a requirement on the the size, you know, I guess another up if the size of being well used.
Yeah. So we're gonna tag about two, about two, about three, like.
Uh but but it matters if it's uh two thousand square feet or three thousand square feet uh.
Well, yeah, that's another area that I think we've been disappointed is.
Also, also uh besides the density, I think the footprint is is something more uh important.
Right.
Uh because that that talks about the open space and so that and also encourages cluster housing, so if things are attached to each other versus so talking about footprint, I think makes more sense in the language, but uh we need to think about it also.
Well, increasing open space requirements reduces the footprint available for the houses.
Right.
So maybe that's the easiest way to do it.
Yeah.
Um. So.
Or may- or maybe the maximum foot, uh we can restrict the maximum footprints, built footprints, I think that that could be another way of uh thinking about uh.
I just don't know if we have that anywhere else in our bylaw. The.
I mean, just seems that.
Marry ratio, not that.
Yeah.
Dicates foot, a building footprint.
No, because it's multiple stories.
Right.
It's it, they're.
But there's still.
Um actually, even if we increase the base density, they can't.
But it's it's.
For for.
Yeah, that's the only one, the le- limit of industrial park.
So you're effectively forcing them to make smaller clustered housing by allowing that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So that we don't have to get into, you can only build units that are X square footage if you're allowing the base density to be higher, but you you still can't build there, you're you are constraining them to that, so they can choose to go up that, but that requires them to then do clustered housing.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
There's no physical other way to do it.
I mean, it seems like that's the way that we're going, based on, you know, all the discussions and public comment and things like that, and the, you know, people wanting to um preserve pervious uh
Yeah.
you know, land and things like that and preserve trees, and and so I think that's we're going in the right direction, we just have to figure out what um is the right language.
Well, maybe we should investigate what's in the limited industrial park, I think it's a what maximum coverage, lot coverage.
嗯哼。
So we do have a provision for maximum lot coverage that's used in limited industrial park. Um so that might help. Uh so I'm getting back then to A, we're leaving A's is.
But we're recommending that we add a new provision that would be ten two two three that encourages a higher density and more incorporation of efficiency, et cetera. Either through the use of like giving them increased density because they're doing the efficiency stuff or incorporating the o- of maximum lot coverage provision or something. But maybe we could just say that, okay, that's gonna go here.
I think we can make maximum lot coverage, not discretionary.
Or the max. Yeah, sorry. Oh, not discretionary.
Just make it.
That's a, that's separate.
Yeah.
So okay, so scratch that, but we're we are
But the efficiency one, yeah, I think we wanna add that, that's a new.
Yes, and that's gonna, that would be like, that would be ten two two three, or it would be in under ten two two, it's, okay.
Okay. Yeah. Alright, so then moving to B, so here the main thing is, do we wanna specify a minimum width and door length of the open space? So this is back to trying to give a quite qual- quantitative aspect to the open space definition.
I was yes at first, and now I'm a no.
Now you're a no, okay.
I might no, but I think in ten two nine, we ha- I think we should discuss um at least fifty percent of common area of the space shall be upland, uh maybe seventy five percent. I think we should increase that number. Or discuss it anyways.
Okay. I think there's certain types of open space where it would be totally fine if it was wetland, but
Okay.
the problem is we can't always choose.
But would like uh but if they can't develop the welland anyway, they're, it's going to be like this.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Well.
So then again, let's go back to um the the one, the Riverwalk. If they had to maintain upland open space, where would they build? They they wouldn't have any space left to build anything.
And 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 I guess, and 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 I'm sure that's a good PRD and I know it's energy efficient and things like that, but I guess the the alternative is, what if they couldn't build there?
Yeah.
Then that would still all be open space, right?
Yeah, 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 well, or it'd be a couple, it'd be a house, or I mean, that's that's how it started, it was a house.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Um now, the thing is too, that one is an in-town PRD, in residency, tight.
嗯哼，嗯哼。
The most of the ones we're gonna be talking about in the future, I think, are gonna be not residency, not as tight, so may, I'm a little more relaxed about maybe increasing the upland requirement for open space. Yeah.
Like how it is ever said in the first place.
Or you could make your your distinction and say residency is fifty percent and
Well, it's true.
I mean, if you really wanted to make that distinction, you could, you you're opening it up, you might, you.
Yeah, yeah, I just don't wanna make it Byzantine, I just, um.
Kate, when you asked that question, we went through that analysis, that chart that we referenced from twenty fifteen goes back to that.
Comes back to the chart.
Yeah.
Okay.
We we evaluated how much open space was set aside on all these different PRDs and and then and looked at
And how much wetland it was.
um how much was wetland and and so forth.
And so when you did that, you were you, the premise of doing that was that this made this project doable?
Yes.
Versus.
And and created valuable open space for the community, I mean, it was, what is the quality of that open space?
Because we, I mean, we could, if we said we wanna push the envelope, so this is what they have done, but maybe if we push it a little, we'll end up with more open space.
嗯哼。Right.
But but you're saying that well, no, we're not, we we're looking at what's viable
Yeah, exactly.
for the developer, okay.
Well, we were looking at the quality of that open space in addition to what we're what were we able to set aside. Some properties, we've we've been able to set aside amazing amounts of open space, um.
And good quality.
And good quality open space.
Yeah.
Others where it's residency district, you're getting the density that you want and 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 it might just be that connect connectivity that you get out of it, so.
Yeah, fair enough, fair enough, okay, yeah, that's good, kind of.
So it it comes to uh the the various zoning districts that you're looking at, and and that's where that qualitative difference needs to be discussed by the board as you're going through all of this criteria.
Yeah.
Okay, we've we've got a residency, we've got a neighborhood, we got this how does that fit with within that, which with the the PRD.
Yeah.
Which. We have language now, it's more or less, but it's
Yeah. 嗯哼。
to drive a truck through.
Certain developers will, and.
Yeah.
But if they do, then I think what we're trying to say is how how do we address that when they, when they hear?
嗯。
I I think we say that we're we we uh explain how we're reading this and what the precedent is and that that's the project that gets approved by the PRD, it has to comply with the regulations.
嗯哼。
It can't not comply with the regulations, we can't approve it. And so and so I think like e- even if uh like there's if like Marcia just word, use the word qualitative, just because it's qualitative doesn't mean that we can't enforce it in the regulations, because
Right.
um
It's still clear.
especially here, it gives examples of what to to underscore the nature of the qualitative thing that they're trying to describe. So I think it's valid to to me, but I mean, I think you're right that something qualitative is harder to, you know. But most of our stuff is a lot, well.
嗯。
But I but I think it's there, like I think it's what like the the things I do.
Yeah, so so I think this goes back to, yes, there will be developers who are a pain, who will try to drive that truck through the vague aspect of this. But those same developers would potentially, if this was more constrained, never enter even into trying to do the PRD in the first place and may just go straight to subdivision or not purchase the the property in the first place, but I think we I I'm very much coming around to, I kinda like that we have the ability to sort of, they come in, they have their idea and we ratchet it back, like that is the power that we have is to 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 sort of ratchet
Okay, I think.
their development in a way that we think is better suited for the town. Um as opposed to just lay out immediately, you know, we want X, Y and Z, and so you have a portion of developers who just blow right past PRD and go straight to subdivision as a result. Um who may have otherwise initiated a a PRD and we could kind of work them uh into a more acceptable PRD. Um I I just think that gives us more leverage than than, I don't know, being more specific about what they can and can't do.
I wish I understood better, like what, like what, we seem to just have an assumption and a presumption that subdivision would be much worse, but with some of the PRDs we're seeing, it's almost like the houses are as big, like big houses, big footprint, uh lot of impervious, but just more of it, so it's not obvious to me.
So so why, why is subdivision's worse, like in?
I'm, I think that's what we're asking, I I'm not sure that they are, they was everything.
But it's.
Well, I think that so subdivision's
Less input.
divide a a a lot into conforming lo- individual lots, right?
Okay, no, okay, okay.
Subdivision.
And so as a result, they have to spread the units out across the whole property.
I see.
There's no pro- no way technically that you really easily could create some common open space unless somebody decides, okay, I'm just not gonna build there or that it is wetland, they couldn't build there. So it's just less flexible and almost by definition has less um, you know, usable space. Also subdivision can lead to um, you know cul-de-sacs and all kinds of other development patterns because of the regulations, you know, now you can waive some stuff, but you know, get waivers, but
嗯哼。
it's still gonna, almost in every case, gonna be.
And we lose.
I would suggest you go out to Monson Road
Yeah.
and and look at the new houses that were developed there under the standard subdivision.
Minds.
They're huge, they're absolutely huge, they're the absolute finest you could get.
嗯。
Six thousand square feet, yeah.
So do you think if you just look at the amount of pervious versus impervious, that it's obvious that you're getting?
And.
Yes.
Okay.
嗯，so that's that's helpful, I think.
Yeah, that's what I, I'm interested in.
Yeah, I it's, it's why we really like PRDs, we're in general.
And and there's just less discussion input from the town and the board in that process, and I think that's
And that's why.
a negative overall, at least for season.
And that's why, you know, the public is often disappointed in us, you know, uh in approving PRDs, but then we also have to. And that's why, you know, the public is often disappointed in us, you know, eh in approving PRDs, but then we also have to be realistic too in terms of it's developable land.
Mm-hmm.
Something will happen.
But you you have very little latitude with the standard subdivision, if they if they meet the requirements of the subdivision rules and regulations, you have to approve it, you have no ifs, ands, or buts.
With no waivers, just. And in fact, almost every subdivision application starts with here's what we could do with no waivers, yes, and then you negotiate from there.
Me same issue. Oh, there's probably less traffic.
Uh yeah, well fewer units in some cases, just big ones, um anyway, we're digressing, we got it, we're we're at eight fifteen. I thought we had a light danger.
Let's keep it so, but it's my point, let's keep it.
Okay, we're still on, we're still on beam.
We're on beam, okay.
So I think so I are we deciding not to do anything at for B?
Uh.
I I don't I don't wanna do B, but I I suggested we must try to ratchet up the amount of, but it sounds like you guys are feel like it's where it should be for ten ten two nine for the amount of fifty percent.
Well, I think we could split B into two things, one, your point to increase the upland portion.
Mm-hmm.
Uh and then sort of a second thing or the primary thing would be adjusting any of the requirements basically uh for review of the the common open space.
Yeah, so and then what Elizabeth is suggesting is if we can scroll down to four ten uh ten four one. This is where we we talked about the report out. So remember, we are making recommendations to the ZBA, right, and so this is talking about what our our recommendation has to tell say in our report. And it's basically saying um.
No, ten four one is about the application, right?
One one.
Yeah, ten four.
The report is um more ten four two.
Where, yeah, go down to ten four two. There we go.
There we go.
Right, so yeah, so we're supposed to review the proposed development, including the design and use of buildings and the open and of the open spaces between and around them. And of vehicular and the opinion opinion to which, yeah, the diversity of units. But so and then the the land to be conveyed to the town, because we said that some of the open space should be conveyed or put in conservation. And so and then so the question is do we bulk up um four two uh ten four two two and ten four two one to kind of be more prescriptive in our report. Cause ten ten four two one always seemed to me to be kind of odd, because it's just basically saying, hey, this property is here and it's got a hill. You know, it's got a wetland on the left. That doesn't really tell us much, I think it's really uh you know, in our report, we should be more like we see this space as good, bad, indifferent, and that this is being preserved, this is not being preserved, which is a good, bad, or indifferent thing, you know?
Are we providing that to the town planner?
This is a report to the ZBA.
I know, but I mean are we giving that kind of detail, or is Elizabeth, are we asking our town planner to do more in order to fulfill that? Like do you think you can get that from our notes and write it up?
They could, but right now the bylaw is not saying that we have to write that up.
Right, but I'm just I wanna make sure that when we.
You know. But yeah, right now, if you look, our report all goes right through each one of these, yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
We just did that for the little bit for.
Mm-hmm. Could do that. So we could say that the report specifies how the open space meets the standard described in ten two nine one.
That's right. I think we, yeah, I think we need to to tighten that up, I always thought four, ten four two one seems too blasé to me, it really should be more like
Why not? Like how all this is made.
our evaluation, it's our evaluation of how the natural terrain is being, you know, preserved appropriately in the context of the developer. I think, okay.
Yeah.
Alright, so that's something else we could look at. Uh then uh yeah, so that's C, so I think what we're saying is yes, we wanna do C, and Elizabeth could dra- draft something.
But actually, I think she was talking more about the application part, which was which
Around C.
Yeah.
um what Kate was starting about, so you have a bonus one too.
So that, oh, okay, so they should come in with their Yeah, okay, alright, good, for so four two two, so Kate, yeah, this is getting back to sell us your sell us your open space plan?
Yeah.
So basically their application, we should make a criterion of sell us your open space plan, when they come in with their application. Right, where can you scroll back up to ten four?
Uh yes, I'm sorry, I was trying to take notes.
One. Yeah, yeah, so it says.
So Elizabeth's suggestion is they could submit as part of the development statement how the project conforms to the envision conquer plan, and I think we're gonna eh make that a little bit more specific to the open space.
See, so all it's saying is they need to give us a development concept that says the number of units type size and common open spaces as a percentage of the land. And see, so that's not really saying, hey, and how you're going to create an amenity or how you're going to protect natural resources. See, so we're gonna ask their application from the outset to include that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Well, would they choose protect the natural resources and what else?
To provide a public amenity B.
Create. I you you don't think they are saying that? I guess they're not specifically putting that in their narrative, right?
Not in their narrative, see, that's the thing, it's like we're we're coming, we're and we have to ask them.
Right. We're we're like to. Well, we have and we also have to kind of make our own reasoning for it based on what we see, okay.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, I think it's just emphasizing like we see this as a standard, it's a quality, it's gonna be the standard, so tell us how you meet it.
Yeah, it's like it's where things start. Yeah, it's where it starts, not where it ends.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I think it's sort of.
Okay. Okay, so we're gonna ask her to do something there, alright, and then D, um definitely, site plan review. So site plan review allows us to get into the sustainability criteria, and now we can talk about the Durham, New Hampshire thing. So basically right now, we don't really go through our site plan review criteria when we're doing a PRD review, and I think we should.
And is that a change in the uh the bylaw, the process, what how what how how does that change?
Well, site plan review will just add some more criteria that they need to specify and that we will um will weigh in on.
We're so, so we're table one permitted uses.
Is that some other approval that we're?
What, yeah, I just wanna, where where in the bylaw is table one?
Yeah.
Uh.
Table one is a section one or?
Okay, thank you.
What's that?
But there is a section on site plan review, um.
Yeah.
Do projects like Justin's site plan review
Yeah.
still go to board and center? Like is he giving us a whole little hook, or is it just changing where we get it?
So like we're doing site plan review on the library, right?
Mm-hmm. Which is a um because it's asked like needs a special permit.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, and so a PRD that doesn't need a special permit.
With site plan review.
Right, cause it's just got its own thing.
You so you want the site plan review criteria, that's in the library?
No, I guess I was looking for where
Yeah, yeah, that's what I wanted to just show the list.
Okay.
He wants to look at that, I wanted to look up ta- where table one permitted uses are to see what we were actually amending.
Okay.
Per D. Cause I'm assuming it says this needs a special permit application, this needs it, and PRD is not listed in there, so.
Does not.
So this is the uh special permit criteria, um I'm sorry, then.
That that's more important, so go do that and I can find the other another time.
But um the table is in the um I'm sorry, it was the table of uses section four.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, I can find it if you wanna go back to the.
Prescribed uses, yeah.
Oh, that's right, when we were looking at that.
Right. There we go.
And so.
So your PRD.
PRD, special permit.
Special permit, special permit.
Oh.
Also, but it here it says not require NR, not required, and you just changed that to an R, required.
Not require NR. R, yeah. That's what we wanna do.
And so is another way to do this, just importing these criteria into the PRD requirements? Or is that a different?
I think it's easier to just do it this way.
Okay, and is it a whole little process that they're going through, or is it just that we're expanding the criteria that we're discussing?
Yeah, the.
It's the criteria, it's expanded criteria that we're looking at.
Okay. Okay. And so when we make it, when we write the the recommendation, we're saying, we would say um.
We would respond to all the site plan review criteria, yeah, like sustainability.
Okay.
Like right now, we we don't really actually have it as a formal thing, but.
And not just that aspect, it's the whole, the whole thing, okay, got it.
All the all the rest is, yeah, you know, lighting, uh how it affects the neighbors, all that stuff.
Alright.
Yeah, which is, I mean, it's all helpful stuff, it's all stuff that is brought up on every PRD anyway, yeah, so it's just formalizing it.
Yeah, yeah.
And. Do we think we can do this by this town meeting?
Sure.
I just wanna make sure we're aiming, you know?
It's changed the NR to R.
Oh, no, this this one, yeah, this one, yes, I meant the rest of it, I was confident about that one.
Uh the other stuff, oh, you mean in terms of uh tweaking some of this language?
I'm just thinking about like
September is usually the time that we start to discuss.
doing it. So we're way ahead of it.
This is, yeah, and so I think we got a shot at doing this, yeah.
Good, that's a good.
So.
I think there'd be a lot of support for this.
There's a ton right now, Pento.
Easy to change it to an R. I would just point out that the only other things in that residential use that we currently require for are combined combined business and residence, industrial and residence and hotels. So in doing that, are we sort of owning something out there that again may defer?
Well. Yeah, but you look at all those other, no, but we've got all the um institutional uses, so that's why we're looking at the library.
Right, but those are very different from residential, you know, those are not gonna be the same people, as I guess.
I see. Well, and and actually though, I think if we're gonna do it for PRD, we would also do it for residential compound or residential cluster.
Not necessarily.
Really?
And the only the reason I'm saying so is because usually a residential compound or a residential cluster results in
Why not?
the same number of units that you would get with a standard subdivision, so it fits within zoning. The the PRD is the one that is usually an increase in your density, and so I think that that might be the rationale that you would use for why it should be
Uh, okay. Go to this extra level of scrutiny.
uh uh signed in here, yes, why it's different.
Okay, I I could be persuaded, secondly, I'm persuaded because we don't get any of these applications, or at least haven't recently.
Right.
No, they they develop develop all the residential compounds you're gonna see.
Yeah, right. Okay, good, are we good?
Yeah, it's productive.
All this, alright. So now let's look at, if we're gonna add site plan review to PRDs, then let's look at how we're gonna tighten up the sustainability aspect of our site plan reviews, and so I received this checklist. And this is used by Durham, New Hampshire uh in all applications to uh be able to evaluate the energy efficiency of the proposed project. And so.
Across the board, not just residential.
I think it's across the board, yeah. And so as you see here, you know, net zero construction, I mean, we're asking all the questions here. So what has happened with this is I forwarded it on to Elizabeth, who in turn forwarded it on to our sustainability director for the town. Who is looking at this and seeing if she can tweak it with regards to Massachusetts versus New Hampshire and town, you know, our town versus the city thing and all that stuff. And so hopefully this will be coming back to us and it could be a device that we use in evaluating the sustainability of proposed projects. And this for me, it's it's a breakthrough in that we haven't had anything other than.
And this is great.
Sure, it's super detailed, my question is, who would evaluate this on our behalf?
Yeah.
And and what what would what would they have to be?
We're gonna have two professional energy consultants on our board, what do you mean?
What what would they, what would be the the cutoff, I mean, if they check certain things and they don't check other things, you know, what um?
Well, but.
Well, just like any of the other criteria, you know, with lighting and um.
I mean, I like it because it means they would have to at least acknowledge they have thought about something and either specifically are not including it
Yes.
or they are specifically including it.
Yeah.
Which would be massive progress for our.
It it sure would be, uh you know, absolutely.
Yeah.
Uh.
This might be something that is the outside consultant that you have done, because somebody outside designed it.
Which we do for parking and we do for traffic and and wait, we're gonna water, right, stormwater, if we can do all that, then energy.
We do.
The art, I mean the art, an architect could, oh, it's not.
With architects, you also need it.
Yeah, yeah.
You from this perspective, from you think an architect, yeah, I don't hear an architect, but I mean can you know evaluate
Architect.
Um.
No.
Like you didn't, would you be like tech, 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 or would you? I know, I'm just saying like. No, oh, you're saying an architect could could check these stuffs.
Yeah.
No, I don't think it would take a lot, that would and.
The projects are has an architect.
Right, that, no, I guess I'm thinking about, you know, they submit it to us and who's who's gonna do the evaluation that says, oh, that that R value is appropriate for, you know, for your
Oh, I see. I see what you're saying.
you know, things like that.
I mean, the architect can calculate all these and check it for for them and then.
But and then give it to us, and we have to assume that it's correct.
Right, I think her point is that that person is part of the developer side, so you need somebody who's gonna say
Yes, and I mean I.
yes, that architect's evaluation of that R rating is appropriate for.
The the biggest part is the top part, if you're saying, okay, we're gonna build this to house to the passive house institute standards or one of these, you know. I'm surprised that I don't see, and I just looked through it quickly, was there anything about hers rating?
Not that I've seen.
And so I'm curious, you know, why, um because my understanding was that you can, before the house is built, you can do the evaluation of the house with and without, like you can model it.
With this data, you could probably get to hers rating, I think, I mean, this is more comprehensive, yeah.
But we can't, but I'm saying that's weird, yeah, but but I think what that allows us to do, particularly if we are go getting to site plan reviews for if we ever have town buildings again or anything like that, is we're asking them to model energy usage and actually operational costs so that they can actually make a determination about why it would be more cost effective to, you know, put things in now, whereas we're, they're not doing it now, so we
Yeah.
they can't make that determination.
So that so that it sounds like there's two you just kind of highlighted two.
Two sides of this.
Yeah, two.
And the the this does not get at the piece that you're talking about.
I don't think it does, but this is, like you're saying, this is a breakthrough, this would be.
No. So this gets a, what are they planning to build and how does it perform? But then the second thing is, is you were saying, what is the economic impact of the decision being made, which is a little tougher to get at, I think.
I I think it can be modeled.
It can be, but do we, what we need wanna do is, what we would do is add a section to this where we have our methodology spelled out
Uh, and obviously it's got assumptions, but but the reason.
where have someone fill that in, and then it would say, oh, payback is in X years.
Yeah, and I'm not, and I I I care less about the the economic impact, obviously for town buildings, I think it would be eye opening, but I think it's more because that is a direct correlation with energy usage, right, so I mean that that would be more of the
Right.
thing I would wanna see is, you know, what's your energy use, that's what like we've never been able to get, we know what the square footage of the new homes built and when we saw that tear down versus the new ones in the last meeting with Liz Russ, but we don't have data on um what uh what the energy use of these new houses are, cause sometimes people say, oh, well, I tore down that nineteen fifties old drafty house and I built a new energy efficiency six thousand square foot house.
Right.
Um but but I mean, I wish we had data from CMLP about has usage gone up and is there anything that we can attribute it to?
Yeah.
Yeah, me too.
I mean, I know they can't give it to us on
I always think about that.
But but there has to be some way that we then can quantify the square footage of the total total of town and then how much we use.
That's a really good point, Kristen, because I I know that in the schools, they design to be green, they are very healthy. Their energy usage actually went up because the air circuit, air.
Sure, that's twenty-four hours running, yeah, a lot of stuff.
Well, no, it the air um exchange, they it's fresh air coming in, so you have to, especially in the winter, you have to shut that, you.
Mm-hmm. Condition it, yeah.
But but it doesn't, you know, it doesn't have to go up, um you know, depending on how it was designed, you say, yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Wow, that's amazing that like that's not part of the whole thing, but I mean, we're getting there, you know, there is healthier buildings, there are, um, yeah.
Yeah.
The kids are healthier, they're less less teased around, less, so it's.
There's more, there's more daylight, I mean, yeah, there's a lot of, but but we have, but we have to think about, you know, operating costs
So it's a better start.
It's noticeable.
particularly because from the energy usage standpoint, if we're gonna be providing all green energy, we've gotta get our energy usage down. Particularly because from the energy usage standpoint, if we're gonna be providing all green energy, we've gotta get our energy usage down in order to.
Okay, so our feedback now is again to the the sustainability director, I assume, who's got the ball right now. Is that we love this approach, we want to encourage the tweaking this as necessary, but that we also would like to see some way to evaluate the kind of impact of the decisions being made. The bottom line, the hers rating.
Of energy usage.
The, I guess, uh you know, that right, the economic impact, I don't know if the or payback period or something like.
More more energy, more energy.
Okay, so the hers rating is like, well, we don't see that here.
I think so.
Yeah, now, I would say that the the questionnaire is much broader than a hers rating of a building, right? Talking about, do you have parking surcharges or incentives and.
The incentive, after. Yeah, yeah.
Well, I don't know if these apply to.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, it it to this relevant section, there should be something. Anyway, I I was very encouraged, I've been waiting for a year plus to have something better than we've had.
Yeah, that's the thing.
Excellent.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I I would I would put on there, you know, are you something to the effect, are you planning to connect to natural gas or, you know, ha- or operate it all electric, it's like
All electric, all electric infrastructure.
to start start getting us thinking that way.
Yeah, yeah.
That's that's great. Thanks for finding whoever's in this. Did you find it?
Yes.
No, it was passed me, um who who sent it to me? Somebody sent it to me? I'm sorry, I should give credit where it's due.
Well, that's great.
Um.
The other thing is, I guess I'd be curious, so they adopted this in two thousand and fifteen, I wonder if, you know, what the follow up has been since then and, you know.
Oh, that would be good.
Ooh, yeah.
Ah. Alright, so Brian Folds.
Okay. Yeah, he's been wanting to talk about, you know, his committee.
Brian Folds sent this to me, yeah.
He's on the, with the Sustainable Energy Committee, I think it's a some different.
Okay. Well, and in fact, that, yeah, and they they are where the sustainability director also works with them, so they they kind of are involved in any tweaks that we've made to this. Okay.
Good interdisciplinary stuff.
Um so we don't have any minutes, as far as I know. Uh then the committee liaison, any, yes, Kate?
I attended the HACX meeting
Alright.
last week for Fortune of it, and um Mast dot was there. And they um it just said general information about projects that might be interesting to folks generally, um is there's a lot of progress on bike path, so we know the one that they just uh
Dedicated.
dedicated, um but the big piece of it was trying to get a, you know, a bridge over the rotary, so that's funded and that's um happening, um
Yeah.
and.
Any update on the timeframe?
Yeah, hold on. Yeah, go ahead, sorry, please.
It's it is being advertised now, uh construction expected to start in next spring, and completion, yeah, according to the contract versus the advertising is November of twenty twenty one.
Wow.
That's this huge, that's huge.
Who is?
Um the bike path, the rail trail, that's gonna, they gotta do that over Route two and.
Oh, the bridge, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um and and another project to extend the Minuteman Parkway from Devo Park down railroad avenue Bedford to um
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
the Bedford Concord Line at the reformatory branch.
Oh.
Right.
Yeah.
Which is also huge.
I thought that, I thought that.
Well, that's that can be a muddy path, a lot of.
Oh. Yeah, huh.
Um so.
Who's in Mast, do they would fund that?
This is Mast dot, this is Mast dot, so.
It's just coming to the the Bedford Concord Town Line, and Concord's next step would be to get twenty five percent design plans prepared for the stretch that comes into Concord Center, uh and pursue uh funding, state funding.
Yeah. Um and then some some other work that's happening at is Route two A, it's between Lexington and like uh Crosby Quarter. They're they're gonna be doing some resurfacing, um and maybe restriping it to try to um accommodate um bikes and maybe pedestrians up um.
On Route two?
No, 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 two A, two A, two A, two A.
Two A. Oh.
Um Route two, there's plenty of stuff going on, but this is like not, it's not funded the tip yet, so it's kinda out there, so I'm not gonna go into that, but those are, those are some, you know, major ones, and the the bike paths are just, I mean, that it's just huge, so it's exciting.
Huh.
Well, there are a lot of stuff.
Okay.
Yeah, we saw your picture and the dedication. It must've been exciting. Yeah, that's right, that's that's a big deal. It's really great like that, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
It's it's beautiful.
Long awaited and richly deserved awards. So.
Good.
Uh any other reports, anything? Okay, uh.
Oh, wait, before before our next meeting, which is on um October twenty second, I think, right? Um is Gary's meeting uh for um.
Oh, yeah, right. Two, 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 nine, yeah, straight.
Yes, yeah, I think it's around, was it August seventeen?
Oh, yeah.
December.
Yeah.
October seventeen, yes.
October seventeen.
It it there's two sessions, one at five P M, one at seven P M, they will be repeats, but we're seeking input on potential reuse for the site, so that that could help inform reme- the continued remediation of the site. Um that site will not be ready for redevelopment for another, probably ten years or so, plus or minus, but
Yeah.
Wow.
uh looking at the the realm of possibilities, uh forty six acres, and uh half of that is uh wetland natural areas that will not be touched, but twenty two acre, uh twenty two acre site is huge, and so that there that the potential for that is really important when people think of them.
Yeah.
So you have to figure out who's going to that.
I just didn't know if anybody knew they were going to be.
I'm definitely going, I am so excited.
Yeah, I don't think it, yeah, I think as long as we don't all sit together and deliberate.
I I will not, I will not be going. Okay, well, good, so we have at least one person going, just wanna make sure that.
Yeah, good, I I heard you go.
Um. Okay, great.
Uh public comments, any public commentators?
So where does it go from here on this like list of A through D or whatever?
Elizabeth will draft up some bylaw language that we'll look at, and will revise and discuss with the public and all that.
Okay, so whatever was kind of outlined here isn't necessarily final.
Oh, right, it's this, well, yeah, we read a lot of video, but do it.
It's all finished.
That's a good question.
I don't even know how she's gonna even tease through that conversation we just had.
That's a good question. So we will, we finalize it by what, January?
I mean.
Yes.
We finalize it by January, and that goes into the the town warrant, and before then, we have draft language that we present, um and add get public input on stuff too, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Lots of.
It's taken about three months to get the language for accessory dwellings to where it's, you know, the ink is starting to dry. So I think that, you know.
I I hope she was asking because she wants to give input, and she wanted to make sure she did not miss her chance.
Yeah.
She has not missed her chance.
I think a lot of mental notes.
Yeah, like wait, wait, wait.
Yeah, there're plenty of chances. Um, okay, and then actually, Marcia, I didn't know if you had any updates on the Thorough Depot uh M A P C where.
Oh, yeah, that's true, what we decided.
Ah, two, the contract I believe has been signed, but I don't have a date for when that's going to get underway, um so all I have is is the information.
And once it goes un- and gets underway, it's like, what, a year?
Is that I don't, uh I don't have that information.
Yeah, yeah.
I know you are. Yeah, Alan, we need to keep Alan in in the loop once the they're ready for uh work with us.
What what's ready for?
Uh Elizabeth Hughes as town planner uh submitted a proposed uh grant application to Metropolitan area planning council or a regional planning agency. They uh for some kind of um for assistance in developing um transit oriented uh
Development.
for development or or zoning for that area, and M A P C love love the idea. So they have allocated the equivalent of forty thousand dollars worth of their staff time to come and work with you to pr- to look at that
Mm-hmm.
development potential of the area for residential, for for mixed use, and to help craft some zoning on that, so that's
Okay.
uh they're like a consultant coming in and helping look at that area.
My guess is that, cause then we know Elizabeth wrote you wrote you down, so I bet she'll tap you when there's, when there's like some steps.
Right, right, cause Alan is gonna be our point person on that project once it
Okay.
gets going. Okay, I think we're ready to adjourn. Thank you. So very different meetings than.